Good afternoon. This is Paula Viesca, Board President. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. At this time, we will move into closed session to discuss one personnel matter, Superintendent's Goals for the School Year 2020-2021.
Thank you, President Viescaz. The board is now going to go into closed session. They will return for public session at approximately 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform and is also being streamed to YouTube. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. I am Paula Viescaz, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, Ms. Pam Costa, and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comments for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website at www.sanjuan.edu/august25. If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that agenda item has been taken up for discussion. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the Raise Your Hand function. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 characters. With that, we are at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes for August 11? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for August 11?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. That was unanimous. We are now at Items E1 through E4. Mr. Allen, do we have any reports from staff, board-appointed district committees, employee organizations, or other district organizations at this time?
We do not, President Viescaz.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We are now at Item E5, and there are no closed-section actions to report at this time. With that, we are at Item F, Visitor Comments. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a public comment at this time?
If you've joined us via the Zoom meeting today and would like to give a public comment at this time, now would be the appropriate time to offer a comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda. We would ask that if you have a comment on one of tonight's agenda items, that you hold your comment until that agenda item is called. Again, if you have a comment for an item that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to offer that comment. You may do so by raising your hand in Zoom at the bottom of your screen. You should have that Raise Hand icon. You can click that. Or if you've dialed into the Zoom call tonight, you can press *9 on your telephone keypad.
Mr. Allen, do we have any general visitor comments at this time?
We do not have any hands raised at this time, and I am verifying that we have had no further written submissions, and we have not. Oh, we do have one hand raised, President Viescaz.
I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Roff &amp; Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda, so we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can and will refer items to appropriate staff members who will follow up with you. I see a hand raised from Mike Laird. Mike, please begin when you are ready, and you'll have two minutes upon commencing.
Oh, hi. I'm not Mike Laird. I'm Lori Quarter.
Hi, sorry. That's the username indicated there, but what's a Lori?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I sent a letter in to the board, and I'm hoping to make sure that you follow the guidelines that you've expressed in your strategic plan to utilize your shared beliefs, your missions, and objectives. And I'm concerned that your flyers for the project for Barrett Modernization has been sent only to a select few houses. I believe that cost justification ascending out the postage throughout the community is well-needed, and the concerns need to be represented throughout the community. And I think that the project cost justification needs to include environmental factors that will be impacted and share those impacted things with the community, like the loss of a green belt and the water levels that may be in danger for the district water supply that has the well on the property. I'm concerned in the parking lot structure. I'm concerned with the traffic structure. And the picture that depicts modernization does not show the Barrett Street, does not show the houses around it, and is not showing much more parking. Concerned about the facilities usage, the use of both facilities and the fields and the gym at the same time is overload again on the community. Concerned that the parking, no matter how much parking you put in, unless you balance those concerns, will not be enough to overload the parking in the community. I'm concerned that I've been misrepresented by your communication specialists that the project was put on hold in February, where in fact that it was letters from people in December to put bids on the project, and I was told that there was no architectural plans when in March you were putting in design coordination meetings. So I'm concerned about being truthful.
Thank you very much, Lori, for joining us this evening. At this moment, I see no other individuals wishing to give public comment. Mr. Allen, can you just confirm that you have not received any other emails as well?
Then it's confirmed we have not received any other emails.
Okay. Seeing no other individuals who have not already spoken with their hand raised at this time, we will now be moving to Item G, the Consent Calendar. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments for items that are on the Consent Calendar?
We have not had any public comments submitted for the Consent Calendar. If you are with us on the Zoom call tonight and would like to offer a comment on an item that is on the Consent Calendar, now would be the time to do so. Again, you may do that by raising your hand, clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you've joined via telephone, pressing *9 on your telephone keypad.
Okay, at the moment, I do see one raised hand. It's Lori who joined us for visitor comments as well. Username Mike Laird. I'm sorry, Lori, I've forgotten your last name. But if you had public comment on consent calendar items, now would be the time to commence your public comment remarks.
Hi, I'm actually Mike Laird's wife. This isn't Lori. We're both here on the Zoom call together. So I would like to make a comment. My name is Kathleen Allen.
Okay, is this regarding Consent Calendar items?
This is regarding the map that was put out for Barrett's remodel. I didn't get a chance to talk.
Okay, please begin two minutes, and that was due to my misunderstanding. I just, I saw the same username, and so I didn't realize that another person wanted to also speak. So please go ahead and begin your two minutes at this time.
Okay, thank you. When I saw the map that was put out, to me personally, I live right behind the school, and that map looks like it's really hard to tell from there what is on the borders, where the homes are. And I feel like that's really deceptive because it doesn't show where it backs up to the home. It's actually cut off on the side, so you can't even see. It was hard to even figure out. We had to basically figure out from the dome on the front building that that was Barrett. And I really feel like that was a deceptive measure by not being able to know where the homes were and the fences were backing up. It just, you know, it looks great. It looks really nice, but there's nothing there that determines where the homes are. And to me, that's important, and I moved in here a year ago. I had no idea that any of this was going on, and I never received a map until I got one from recently regarding what was going on. And it will definitely affect. We're right up to that parking lot. And, you know, we're concerned about the light that's going to be shining in our backyards. I hear that there may be AAU basketball courts that are going to be going in, and the lights on those, the sound of the basketball hitting all the time. You know, I realize we did buy homes right next to a school, but I really think that there should be more done to include the community, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and again, apologies and thanks for the accommodation. That's been our first multi, multiple individuals in one household. And so at this point, I don't think there are any other individuals from that household who wish to speak, and the Raise Hand function has gone away. So seeing no other public comment for either visitor comment or the Consent Calendar at this time, do any board members wish to remove any items from the Consent Calendar? Seeing none, I am requesting that we remove Item G2, the Purchasing Report, be pulled. Is there a motion to approve Item G1 and Items G3 through G7?
So moved.
I'll second. It's been moved by Dr. McKibben and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. At this point, we are at Item H, the continuation of the Consent Calendar. Item G2 was pulled from the Consent Calendar. Dr. Calvin, will you please address Item G2 when you are ready? I don't see Dr. Calvin quite yet. There we go. Hi, thanks for joining us. Please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, President Velazquez. We are requesting that the board pull the Vista Child Therapy Center line item from Page 1 of the report. We would like to bring this back for approval on the September 8th board meeting.
I'm sorry, President Viescaz, I didn't catch that. I got to the page. Can you repeat that, please? What are we pulling?
The Vista Child Therapy Center line item from Page 1 of the report.
Thank you.
So we're pulling that item, members of the board, as we found today the figures were off a little bit. We're going to bring that back with the appropriate allocation at the next board meeting. But all the other items that would be on G2, we would be taking action on.
Any other questions or clarifications on that item? Seeing none at this time, is there a motion to approve Item G2 as amended?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Costa. Is there a second?
Saul can have it. I have the last one.
I'll give this one to Saul. It's been seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are now at Business Items. We will begin with our first business item, 2020-2021 Start of School Update. Superintendent Kern, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viescaz, members of the board, and our community that are joining us tonight. We are going to, thank you Deputy Bassinelli for pulling that up. We are going to have a number of folks from the various divisions share tonight. Each year, we come forward to the board and we share some information about the start of the school. And to say that this is a unique start of the school year would be an understatement, much like how we ended the last year was different and challenging. We absolutely face some unique challenges in terms of how we're educating our students day-to-day, unlike any time that we ever have previously. We will be sharing kind of each division and then some other information, and then at the end be able to answer any questions. Melissa, if you'd go to that second slide, you're going to continue to see these themes throughout the course of the year. I think Mrs. Bassinelli has shared this probably in the last two presentations, and I think you'll probably be seeing this come back again and again, that really these are the themes and the areas that are our focuses in terms of our strategic priorities for this year. I did, before we move into the presentations by each division, just wanted to share with the board and then the public as well. Each year, we do have a, what we call is our Smooth Start. President Viescaz and myself had the opportunity to address all of our new teachers that we hired this year. Even through these unique challenges, we hired over 50 new instructional staff this year. So they went through that Smooth Start training, and then we always like to share our enrollment information at the start of this year. We were projected to be at 39,000, just a little under 300. We're just a little over 39,000, so less than a 300 decline, which considering all the challenges and the choices that people have made, we're feeling pretty good about. We are going to continue to track, pardon me, we're going to continue to track those families who are still in our San Juan community. We will continue to communicate with those folks throughout the course of the year, and we will be reaching out to them probably shortly in the next month or two. And then again, prior to our open enrollment period, we'll be reaching out back to them with new information as we have that. So our principals did an outstanding job of really identifying those members of their community that are still in their community but may not be in the school, and we'll continue to engage with those families throughout the course of this year. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Rick Messer, and he's going to share some information around our high schools.
Good evening, President Viescaz, Superintendent Kern, members of the board, and Ms. Cunningham. You know, Superintendent Kern said this year has probably been a very challenging start of the school year, but it's also led to some incredible creativity on how to reach out and welcome our kids back to school. Tonight, I just want to share a number of the activities that our schools reached into deeply to try to find ways to connect with our kids and bring them back. So our high schools had numerous welcoming activities for their students and staff in this new virtual environment. For our freshmen, there were many virtual Link Crew activities and freshman orientations across the district. Both juniors and senior students and staff from Bella Vista, Mesa Verde, Del Campo, and others supported the ninth graders with Zoom activities that included breakout sessions and connecting activities to really encourage and support and build those bridges to, you know, make those ninth graders feel welcome to their new schools. As you can see at the bottom of the screen, our Link Crew Advisor from Mesa Verde High School, Ms. Nicole Guccini, gets the award for being the most spirited Link Crew Advisor. And again, they videotaped their presentations. They had many students, Link Crew juniors and seniors, giving messages to the kids, which you can find on their websites. Many of our high schools also hosted virtual freshman orientation activities using Zoom and YouTube to introduce students and schools to the staff. And you can see at the top left-hand are Welcome to Encina Preparatory, and you can see that it's in different languages, and it was a way to bring as many different community and parents into these meetings and making them feel welcome and a part of this process. All of the high schools in some fashion created welcome-back videos that included their principals and staff leaving messages for the students. You can see the two students to the left of the screen are from Bella Vista. They have a whole slideshow of their seniors providing welcoming messages to those incoming freshmen and the students coming. And you can also see at the bottom left and bottom right that the schools created tours for their students and their families. And you can see to the bottom right, you know, Ram Pride, the new student center at Casa Roble High School. So the schools did many, many activities. They also reached out to the parents and the students and provided live Zoom meetings and orientations for parents. And at San Juan High School, Encina High Schools, they had meetings in English as well as Spanish and other languages on different nights to promote, as well as offering special ed families opportunities to meet with their staff beforehand, really trying to, as best as possible, connecting with these folks before, you know, they're sending their students to our schools. But there's one highlight I want to share with you in the upper right-hand corner of the screen. This is a student from Miraloma High School, and the International Baccalaureate Parent Organization paid for yard signs for every incoming freshman at Miraloma High School, and the administration and classified staff hand-delivered them to every freshman's home before the start of the school year. And I would like to share with you an email from the ninth grader in that picture. Her name is Eliana Fuentes, that she had sent to Principal Tracy. And it says, "Hello, Ms. Tracy. My name is Eliana Fuentes, and I wasn't too able to thank you the other day when you stopped by to give us our lawn sign. I wanted to say thank you, and that I'm very excited to start high school at Miraloma. I plan on doing my best in the face of these unprecedented times, especially as a new-fledged freshman. Go Matadors kindly, Eliana." And it's things like this that we see across our district of our staff, going far beyond what we probably would have done in the past to welcome our kids. So again, many, many activities and welcoming our students. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Jim Schumake. I'm here to present our information on our middle schools. Our theme for August 2020 really was about establishing culture and climate, and our big wonderin' was, how are we going to do that in a virtual setting? We decided the answer to that question was being very intentional with our actions. So specifically, what we embarked upon was we made personal phone calls to every new middle school student to welcome them to their middle school and to assess their readiness and their needs related to technology, navigating our platforms, meals, and our operation Find Our Kids. And as Will Rogers' middle school principal, Aaron Wurcher, commented, every member on our staff is now a personal detective. This is a picture you can see on this slide of Principal Sylvan, Principal Kirk Bebo, and Arlington Heights Principal Rafael Martinez, who coincidentally were out doing the same thing, which was looking for kids that were not participating in school. And they came across each other at the same exact house, and I'm happy to report that they were successful in this visit in connecting a middle school special ed kid and an elementary sibling back to school. So that's exciting. Melissa, do you mind moving us to the next slide? Thank you. Additionally, our sites hosted virtual orientations for new students, rallies, and dress-up days. As Rick indicated, we have a robust web program where everyone belongs, where we rolled out those as well. And the staff really took it upon themselves to create a welcoming environment by introducing themselves to their students with fun videos. You can go on Instagram and most of our school's websites to watch those videos if you're interested. And lastly, on that theme of intentionality, I'm before the start of the school year to learn and experiment with how to create climate and culture in new ways. Our site leaders met twice a week since school closed in March, and a standing agenda item was really about sharing out best practices and lessons learned. And those formed our August Professional Development Day, with staff at that point reflecting on lessons learned, best practices, and implementing those during our PDs, so that teachers had a toolkit related to climate and culture options that could be used once we started school on that very first day. I'm going to end our middle school presentation and kick it over to our senior director, Amber Lee.
Thanks, Mr. Schumake. Good evening, everyone. This is Amber Lee Townsend. I'm the Senior Director of Elementary and K-8 Schools, and we wanted to share with you how we opened up school this year. Elementary and K-8s opened the year in ways to really show our families that we continue to be about making connections and building relationships to support our kids in their learning throughout the year. Site principals and VPs alongside their staff are working very hard to ensure that every student and family feels welcomed, feels like they have a place to be, and knows that they're supported in this journey together, and we really want to thank them all. Some examples of that work include doubling down on reaching out and building relationships with our earliest learners, our kids who are entering school for the very first time, where one school site in particular did the delivery of what they called Jitter Glitter and Get Ready Confetti, which was delivered to the front doorsteps of kids to place under their pillows at night to help them get rid of those first-day jitters and get ready for the first day of school with us. Many elementary teams held Get Ready Zooms before the first day of school to let families know what it might look like in class. We made phone calls home. We made home visits. We visited childcare centers. We went out and visited our community partners to get the word out that school was starting, and we were excited to welcome them. We hosted classroom supply, delivery, and deployment, and we also hosted Chromebook pickup to make sure that families were ready to go that first day of school. Ms. Bassinelli, if you could forward the slide. Thank you. Some schools did socially-distanced masks on drive-through welcome parades. Principals planned welcoming activities for their staffs to cheer them on and make sure they too felt welcome in this environment. Overall, our pre-opening of school and opening day activities were about energizing our communities to bring them along with us on this journey, and these positive moments were truly cherished. All of these reach-outs were also used as moments to predetermine who and possibly where some of the safety nets that we would need to deploy immediately were within our distance-learning future. I'm now going to pass the presentation to Dr. Calvin, who will share more with you about special education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Good evening. And I'd like to tell you more about our special education centers and K-8 homeschool and the number of activities that they embarked on in preparation for the new school year. Lawrough Transitional School prepared for the 2021 school opening by providing professional development for the staff that focused on utilizing the advanced features of Zoom and synchronous instruction. The team also received training on Unique Learning System, which is a comprehensive online curriculum that covers a broad range of skills, but the focus for the team was on the Life Management Unit. Virtual parent nights were held on August 5th and 10th, and many staff members are on hand to meet and greet students during the Chromebook distribution prior to the start of the school year. The focus for the year is Rough, which stands for Relationships, Understanding, Friendships, and Future. Next slide, Ms. Bassinelli. The staff of La Vista Center gathered in early August for collaboration time and trainings in Google Classroom for teachers. They also established a new online reward system for students and planned for the eventual return of in-person learning. Staff were on hand during Chromebook distribution and made a point of trying to connect with students during this informal meet-and-greet opportunity. The first day of school began with a Zoom scavenger hunt, and a virtual back-to-school night was held on August 20. Ralph Richardson sent staff a welcome letter to all families at the end of July and engaged in professional development that focused on virtual learning strategies. Families were given the option of iPads or Chromebooks during the distribution of technology, and staff were on hand to meet families and answer questions. Families also received emails, calls, and text messages from teachers in which they shared information about distance learning and explained class schedules. Next slide. K-8 Homeschool, the program that we've recently expanded. K homeschool, the program that we've recently expanded has proven to be an appealing alternative to our families. And enrollment has grown from 50 students in 1920 school year to 761 students as of this morning. The homeschool team spent four days this month meeting with families and distributing introductory work packets and literature to students. Each homeschool advisory teacher reached out by phone or email to their homeschool families to begin the steps of guiding parents and guardians. Through the homeschooling process, program manager Sandra Patard also sent out numerous Blackboard updates to families. Excellent. Meal services provided daily at 44 school sites each morning and we are currently distributing an average of 1300 meals per day to San Juan students. We also have staff on hand who continue to explore ways to increase our meal distribution. And now I believe I'm handing this back to Amber Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Calvin. We wanted to leave you all with a poem that was written by one of our San Juan parents. Her name is Shannon Wilson. And she wrote this poem as she was thinking about entering this school year. And was kind enough to share it with us and give us permission to read it here tonight. And I believe she's here with us in the Zoom as well. So we want to share a special, special thank you to her for inspiring us truly with her words. And the title of the poem is Back to School in a New Way. Going back to school this year sure has a different feel. Nobody could have predicted this. It sure feels surreal. Teachers, students and parents have all had to adapt to the unprecedented and challenging distance learning format. Materials distribution was quite an interesting task, full of signs, lines and arrows and everyone wearing a mask. But behind the masks and protocols were smiles, love and spirit. It was a beautiful reminder that together we are in it. This pandemic and our distance does not change the fact that we are still Mustangs and we are stronger as a pack. Creativity and gratitude are at an all time high and social connection is still possible. Thank goodness for wifi. So let's say a positive and let's stay positive and strong and show up for each other. And please, please stay patient with the fathers and the mothers. Let's saddle up to Chromebooks in a quiet and inspiring room and don't forget your password because you have to log into your classroom. Our incredible teachers and staff have been working harder than ever to ensure that their students stay healthy, bright and clever clever. Although what the year will look like isn't exactly clear, we know we'll make the best out of the 2021 school year. And I just wanted to share that with you as a party note and a thank you to everyone for supporting us. And President Viascas, we would like to now turn it over to you for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the whole team for that presentation. It's truly a team effort. Before I turn it to board member questions and comments, I want to first make a quick check and see. Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments at this time?
We have not had any visitor comments submitted for this item. However, if you have joined us here on the Zoom call and would like to offer a comment on this item. Now would be the time to do so. Again, you can do that by raising your hand, clicking that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've dialed into the Zoom meeting tonight, star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand.
With that, I'm just going to take a short pause while folks perhaps. Might be working their way to the raise their hand function.
While you're waiting a second.
Oh, yeah.
I could just share this. I ran into our Senior Director of Technology, Mr. Skabinski today while I was out at one of the school sites and he was delivering some more devices. And at the time, I think he had told me we had distributed just short of 26,000 devices this year. Which was much more than we had in the spring. And we've, we've also handed out significantly more hotspots than we have to families in the spring and. And if our community still needs those, we have those. And so we want to make sure that everybody has the tools that they need this year as well. So I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you Superintendent Kern. And there still are no public comments at this time on the Zoom feature. So I will turn it to my colleagues, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. I just want to. It's reports like, reports like this. It makes me very proud of this district. I'm actually touched by the the manner which our students went out of their way to welcome new students to their school. And you could clearly see their effort in in a time that. Is so unique and so rare to see the type of effort. And I just applaud these schools, our teachers, our administrative staff for their effort. And just appreciate all of them and tell, let everybody know we're going to get through this and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I too would like to say a sincere thank you to staff, to the school staffs that worked so hard. And it was evident in the report, it was also evident in parents and grandparents who called me. And said that they had been concerned and as they actually participated in start of school, they felt so good about it. And it was a different feeling from spring of the year of last year. So. We're off to a great start and that's because we have such a fantastic staff. I had a couple of questions. One of them had to do with homeless students, McKinney Vento students and technology. Are we? It was reported to be by someone that they saw a family in a parking lot of a business. In San Juan and they assumed the family. Obviously, the family was living in their car and they were trying to use the wifi of that business. If, are there ways that we could reach out to families that might be living in their cars and provide any sort of services to them for technology?
I'll take that one. We are providing hotspots for our homeless families. And we do have a team of staff on hand who reach out to them and offer support. So. We can find out who they are then yes, we can provide support and services to that family.
That's wonderful. And then finally, knowing that the authentication process will happen on August 28. What safety nets are we putting in place in case a family is not able to do that?
I'm happy to tackle that if. No one else is jumping in. At the middle school level, I think it's reflective of what's going on at all of our divisions. Sites have notified families that this is pending. It's posted on many of our schools websites. I know we had our principal's meeting today and they were asked to re remind. Parents that they should take a little bit of extra time logging on in the morning, just to make sure that that gets up and running. And each school site has really all hands on deck that morning to field phone calls. I know also that our admin assistants here at the district office, whatever anything goes down are inundated with phone calls there. They know to be ready for this as well. It's really like I said, an all hands on deck moment, but we feel like we've got the messaging out. It just, I think there's going to be a few folks that are scrambling at the very last minute because they didn't log on early, but we'll get past it.
If I could add for elementary school also really quickly, our school offices are open. And they are ready to support the families as they need, recognizing that some may struggle with the authentication process. But as Jim said, we're all hands on deck and ready for it.
Great.
And Ms. Costa, I confirm that as well. I mean, we're going to be set up that morning with everybody prepared to just support and and put minds at ease hopefully if there is stress coming. So.
I know there are people who are stressed. They called me about the stress. So I'll keep saying call your school office. So hopefully everyone gets on and and learning keeps on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thank you. I just want to say it's going so well. It's just a completely different feel from the end of the year until now, or end of last year until now. And I've said it once and I'm going to say it again. It takes mountains to build online systems and what was able to be done in just a short amount of time without adequate funding to build these systems. It's just amazing and to be applauded. And I know in our home, many folks know I do have an eighth grader now. It's really working for him. We'll see how authentication goes. He said he did what he had to do. I will see. But you know, we'll be patient. We'll make sure it gets done. And you know, I thought it was kind of cool on the first couple of days of school, you know, during their lunch breaks. He was teaming up with friends he has at a bunch of different schools and they were like sitting together at lunch, playing games, but electronically and remotely. And I just thought that was so cool that, you know, even though they can't be with each other, they were figuring out a way to be with each other, which really just warmed my heart. And so I wanted to ask a couple of questions. First, I want to acknowledge too. So thankful for everything that's going right, but do want to acknowledge that, you know, there's some families that are receiving special education services, especially in the Montevera range that are struggling. And I just want you to know you are being heard and there's a lot of people within the district and on the board that are, you know, doing everything that we can. To get things where they need to be. So I just want to acknowledge that you're heard and you have a lot of people working hard to meet your needs. Wanted to also just note that I reached out to the superintendent prior to the meeting to talk about tech access as well. Not only do folks have technology, well, the question I had is, do we have any students that can't connect, that don't have the tech to connect in that whether, whether that be. The actual device or broadband. It's my understanding to our knowledge that's no. And so I'm really proud of that, you know. And I'm really excited that there's a way, you know, that we are making an effort to connect with folks we haven't connected with. To ensure that everyone does have what they need to connect. So really. Closed a digital divide. That was huge just a couple of months ago. And you know, I have one more question too. I know that there's several students, including students experiencing homelessness. And others that are just, you know, experiencing the struggle, struggle that really depended on school for personal care items. You know, we're talking about shampoo, deodorant, feminine care products. And I know that, you know, that's an above and beyond service. But I'm wondering if there's anything set up so those products and services could still be provided for folks in need or if that's something that could be explored.
I do know that we have our support staff on hand to reach out to families to see if they need any help or assistance. And they do connect them with resources.
That's it for me.
And Ms. Creason, I would say as well, I appreciate that question and maybe we can gather a little bit more information because I know there are a lot of things going on specifically at school sites. But I think in hearing your question as well, maybe I can challenge each of the folks that. That head up that the divisions to kind of gather that information because if there is a gap there. Then we need to figure out how we can fill that gap and potentially provide those supports, whether it would be through San Juan Central or some other instrument. So I think that's, that's an important thing to think about during these times.
Thank you. And anyway, I could be supportive too. You know, a broken record again, I'm going to say it, you know, not everything is on the school district. And I think public health has a lot to do with some of this stuff in any way that I could be helpful to make, you know, make that happen for our kids. Happy to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
I was looking at the lunch, the meals number at 1300 per day and was wondering if that. That seems low. Do we expect that to go up? Is there any particular kind of strategy that we have if that is, that is the case and but and. And what is the plan? I guess I'll stop there.
I'll take that. So it is low. We've actually been reaching out to other districts and. And folks across the region are seeing a much lower participation than we did in the spring. We're talking about a couple of ideas. We're actually looking at, could we adjust schedules? I know Mr. Stevens was working with his team about could we do it some sites morning and other sites maybe in the afternoon, evening. We're looking at what other schools are doing, you know, because we have a set schedule. It, it's harder for kids to maybe get there in the middle of the day. But are we missing some kids if school's starting at a certain time and kids aren't getting up as early? So we're looking at all those factors. The other piece of it right now is there's a lot of restrictions at the federal level that are. Limiting us in terms of how we were able to distribute food in the spring. But we had a conversation in cabinet yesterday that that I was speaking to. If, if we identify a certain amount of one time funds and we can find creative ways to utilize those one time funds. To potentially feed as many kids as we can, we need to figure that out because food insecurity, I know is something that this board. And, and, and are the leaders in this district are very concerned about. And, and again, I don't want to commit to this, but we were talking, are there certain neighborhoods where we could utilize? Distribution via buses at certain areas. Now the challenge again, there is with currently. We might have to do that and not get reimbursed for those meals that we historically would have been reimbursed for. But we're trying to figure out at this point, we may do that just anyways. I mean, there's some real challenges that are coming into play that I can share with the board as well, even around meal distribution. You know, we, the meal apps and folks filling out the meal apps is a huge. Issue and concern that we have because we're funded not only for Title I funds, supplementarily funds, we became. Even, even E rate dollars, but our concentration dollars are based on that. And we're seeing people not having the incentive to do that. So I can share with the board, I had a conversation yesterday with a couple of local lobbyists. Kevin Gordon as well as the suburban school district. And, and again, today I'm a conversation with the county superintendents, Chris Hoffman and myself. That it would, the best case scenario for us is if we could get some kind of legislation where we were held harmless this year. Because that could have a tremendous impact as we go forward in terms of loss of revenue at, at our neatest schools for Title I. So that's a real challenge that we're faced with. Actually had a good idea from a principal today as I was visiting with the school. I need to follow up with Trent on that one. But we're working through all those things. So I appreciate that, that question, Dr. McKibben.
Yeah. Food insecurity, we know from previous years that in many cases we, we provide the primary meal, you know, for. As much as a quarter of our, our students. So. So we've got, I think I agree with you. We've got to be way more creative this time. And thank you for thinking through those sort of things. And thanks for the whole staff. I mean, and, and particularly thanks for the parents, your numbers that if we have, you know, fewer than 300 that didn't. Stay with us. That says a lot about our community too. And so I think we, we need to thank them too for sticking with us. And for, for our staff for being as flexible and, and thinking through these things. In ways that none of us ever anticipated. Thank you very much.
You know, I know that. Dr. Calvin mentioned how many students were in homeschool, but between our homeschool. And our independent study program, which I had the chance to visit today. We, we're getting close to 1,200 kids in those two programs. And I think just having opportunities for students in these unique times. The principal at Morocco was telling me that one of the families that just transitioned over there for independent study. They have five children and four of them are in elementary school. But the, the high school student is really caring for the other students. So kind of the, the synchronous instruction that was happening at the school. That older sibling is there to support those younger siblings and then they can do the independent study when they need to. So. There are a lot of real challenges that are going out there. And again, we need to find as many ways as we can to support. Families, but also when you think about the challenges that that young lady's facing and supporting her brothers and sisters. Creates a whole nother level for that, for that person.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. And thank you Superintendent Kern. I want to echo my, my thanks to the whole team. The first day of school, I sent a note of thanks, you know, we said it a couple of times, but. Normally we're starting the first or second inning of a long game and for most of our team, we're actually in. I'm actually, I shouldn't have gone with a sports metaphor, so you'll all have to forgive me, but like the 12th, 13th inning, I know baseball. Um, and the point is we didn't get that reprieve that we usually get. And yet people are still showing up and giving, giving their all and giving their best. So I truly appreciate it. And I do think though, that our strength isn't necessarily, like I think to expect perfection is just impossible. And I'm not sure any of us really. Expected that, but I think our strength is not in perfection, but really just in being responsive. And, and turning the tide as quickly as possible. And so. Again, super grateful for all the work that's also, that's already been covered, but did want to just kind of. Add a voice to some of the pieces that were a little bit rocky at the beginning. Mostly to say that at the end, we actually course corrected really quickly and I'm proud of that. And I think it's that spirit and that attitude of course correcting and meeting the needs of our students and our families as we go along. as we go along, that's going to be absolutely critical to maintain moving forward as we potentially move in and out of different instructions or even as we maintain the existing kind of Zoom life that, that we're on. And so I know even kind of at the, some of the distribution points, there was temporarily a device shortage that we were not entirely, we discussed it before, not entirely within our control, but we were able to almost immediately get devices to all of the families that needed, needed them. And so really proud of that quick turnaround. And then on the first day of school, we had a very slight, Mr. Kern's laughing because we had a very, I want to give voice to our, our server issue at the very beginning. I think for two hours at the beginning of school, some of our families may have experienced some difficulties logging in. And it certainly, it wasn't wide, it wasn't across the entire district, but it, it did affect some of our families. But we got that up and running in a very short few hours. And I just want our community to know that it was Superintendent Kern's and the team's top priority to get it up and running that morning. But we were excited to see it and get it fixed. And the other thing I want to kind of just lend a voice to is we've already seen a couple of incidences of COVID on our school sites that have occurred and our families likely saw it both through social media or through this individual site postings. But we are continuing to navigate and iron out that consistent communication protocol so that our families are aware of what's going on and are operating in as much light as possible that we can shine on. I think a lot of things we might not have full awareness about, but as soon as we do, we, we share it out. And so continue to just ask for your patience and know that we are working very quickly to, to respond. And I don't think at this point, any of that's over. There was a Zoom outage that was like worldwide that we just, that we don't have control, control over. There's just so many things that are out of our control. And I think particularly for a, a infrastructure as big as a school district, we like to have complete control over things as much as possible and we, and we just don't. And so I know a lot of us are struggling with that, but please know that, that we're doing, we will continue to communicate and we will continue to do our absolute best. And Mr. Kern, I want to invite you to respond to any of that if you wish. If not, we can move on.
No, I appreciate those comments and I did, I was probably more panicked that first day than anybody. You know, you want, you want to get things off on the right foot, but I appreciated Peter and his team and the responsiveness. And, and I, I think, you know, Dr. McKibben, you hit it when we need to thank our community because they really are showing us a lot of patience. I will agree with Ms. Creason that we're going to continue to see what we can do with our, you know, our students who provide, have special services provided to them because, you know, we need to, we need to meet the needs of all of our students. And so we're challenging our special ed team every day to say, what is it that we're not doing? Are there outside providers? We can tap into anything that we can do to help support those students. We need to access those, those opportunities and, and we'll continue to do so in the coming weeks and hopefully months.
And actually before we move on, there was one topic that a couple of board members also hit, but we also heard about it in the presentation and it was Operation Find the Children. Can you speak a little bit to the efforts that we, one, just maybe expand about on that? I want to not like create unnecessary concern, but I think there's been an extraordinary effort to kind of find all of our kids that, you know, showed up in the first week or didn't show up.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm a little bit fanatical when I look at enrollment and numbers. And I think on day three, we got some information that we just had, there, there seemed to be a fair amount of students and families that might not have connected yet, for whatever reasons. You know, we have communities that they may be new to the area. If you just moved to our district and you're not used to schooling, school starting this time, there are times where people don't know that school's starting until maybe they see the yellow buses driving or they see kids walking to school. And that happens in all our communities if, if, if you're not aware. And so I think we saw a lower level of possibly attendance and, and folks engaged those first three days. And so I really challenged the, the folks that support our schools as well as our principals to identify every student that was on their roster and, and, and spend as much time. And so there are, there are literally spreadsheets by every single school that say the name of the students, we've got their ID numbers and some of them said contacts up to eight times. I mean, they were, because a lot of times folks don't answer their phones, you know? So what was it? How could we, you know, continue to push and push till we got information? There were times we'd have someone else that would answer the phone and say they moved. So we know who moved out of our community, we know who's still in our community. We ask questions. Do you plan to return? If we were to go, you know, hybrid, yes or no? If we're to return full-time, yes or no? Because we want to be able to support those families going forward. And I think the picture, when you see both a middle school, site leader and an elementary site leader going out into their communities really showed the level of commitment that our staff had. And I think when Ms. Creason asked me, you know, we're not having anybody saying we're not, we don't have devices, but what I would say to you is if there's a community member who's saying, I haven't been able to, let us know because we want to reach out to them. I think what I can assure you is that, that the school sites have made every effort to make contact with every single student that they were aware of that was on their roster. And we're going to continue to follow those students to see if they do need the support, regardless of whether or not they're in our schools.
And with that, I just want to issue one last thing and that is to our, our community. Please keep emailing things that come up. Please keep letting us know. We really do seek to be responsive and we do, we hear you. We know really quickly when a server's gone down or when something else is not quite right. I know we'll all be well aware on the authentication day and hopefully moving forward. That'll, hopefully we won't have too many of those in our, in our future. But thank you for all that you continue to do. This has got, none of this gets easier and, you know, and now we've also had to pivot just slightly with the smoke and the poor air quality. You know, we do still have, we do have staff that are performing, you know, essential and vital functions at our site. And so it's just, it's a consistently moving target. And so we promise to be responsive. We might not be perfect, but we will respond to your needs and, and try to address them as quickly as possible.
Ms. Fiasca, let me share one quick thing. I love when we have these virtual meetings, I get information a little bit. The first day attendance was ninety-three percent. By day seven, it was ninety-seven percent and four percent is a difference of sixteen hundred kids. So right there, you can already see that the efforts that the sites did to get to where our attendance was ninety-seven, or ninety-seven percent. I want to say thank you to all our site leaders. I know I have a lot of them on this Zoom tonight because that doesn't get done. People in our communities are first and foremost responsive to their local schools. And that's why we've said there's such a priority for them to be the ones communicating with our families as well. So I just wanted to share that before we moved on.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of the board, thanks to the whole team and to the community. We'll, we'll figure this out together. With that, seeing no other outstanding questions or comments from my colleagues, we are at item I two, Equity Update Part One. Dr. Calvin, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. And once again, good evening, President Velazquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. The purpose of this presentation is to share the journey to San Juan Unified's eight-point commitment to educational justice. Do you see the PowerPoint yet?
We do not quite yet. That's okay. I will let you know when it's up. There we go.
Okay.
It's up and running.
Okay, so I'm going to start again. The purpose of this presentation is to share the journey to San Juan Unified's eight-point commitment to educational justice, to provide an overview of the eight commitments, to hear about one site's equity journey and to review district-wide actions for the 2021 school year. Next slide. Next slide, Ms. Marshall. Thank you. In March of 2020, we had to close all schools as a result of the pandemic. And while we faced challenges throughout our infrastructure, the pandemic coupled with national social unrest brought the persistent gaps within our educational organization to the forefront. The ongoing challenges in regards to access and opportunity prompted many within our community to reach out to the district and offer their support in our quest for more just and equitable outcomes for all students. We were encouraged by the outpouring and responded by engaging the community in a series of listening sessions. Students, staff, parents and community members all came together and were charged with the task of not only identifying the barriers within our system, but to establish ideas for change. Tonight, Director of Equity and Student Achievement Diana Marshall, Program Coordinator for Equity and Student Achievement Lori Vine, Star King Principal Greta Schulz and Star King Teacher Amber Tredaway will discuss the current work within our community at the site and district level and will share next steps. And with that, I want to begin with Ms. Vine or introduce Ms. Vine, who will provide more details in regards to the listening sessions and the eight commitments.
Thank you, Dr. Calvin. Over the summer, following the tragic death of George Floyd, as well as the civil unrest that has occurred in our community due to many other examples of social injustice, our district felt the responsibility to offer an opportunity for healing, reflection and ultimately action through a series of listening sessions. We heard requests from our community to create a space where we could break down the barriers that currently exist in our system, as well as offer support and healing for the harm that so many are feeling. These sessions were co-created and co-facilitated by staff, site and district administrators, our district's equity liaisons and community partners. These listening sessions incorporated our families, our staff and our students and were a powerful opportunity for a variety of lived experiences to be shared. In our youth sessions, we had students join us from all across the school district and almost all grade levels were represented. We even had students as young as first grade participating. The virtual environment provided us a platform to hear from many more of our community than, than we may have heard from in an in-person meeting. We had several hundred people in these sessions and we were, we were, excuse me, we were able to honor the unique voices and perspective through the use of a digital jam board, one of which you can see an example of here on the screen. The following video shows some additional thoughts and ideas about these sessions as expressed by a parent, a community partner and two students.
I, I think I didn't share right.
As a parent, I was really excited to hear that the district was putting on listening sessions. They were held really well. I really appreciated the community partners and the staff that guided the listening sessions. They created an open environment so that all the parents and families could speak and share their thoughts.
There were several iterations of how it all started. We started just having conversations about, you know, should we just listen to what, what's happening in the community and get like a pulse of how people are feeling versus how do we actually move to action? I learned a lot in that process. I think all the co-facilitators were really moved.
Listening session was a great experience. Everyone shared their thoughts about social injustice, what's going on in the world and how the district can change their schools individually.
It was just nice also to know that there were adults out here who wanted to hear us. They wanted to know how can we do better? During the youth voice session, there were a lot of kids who stated that some teachers didn't listen to their concerns or problems, that administration and staff didn't consider some problems that they had faced because of their race to be serious issues, that they were kind of dismissed or excused, or that they were listened to and nothing happened. So I think that it's important that teachers, staff and administration are more responsive when students come to them with issues and that they are listened to, that it's not just marked or marked off as, oh, you're sensitive, or it was just a joke that it's taken care of.
I think it had a great impact, right? Like I'm an African-American woman who grew up in an education system that like wasn't built for me. So like some of the things we were talking about, I think I personally experienced like in the eighties.
I actually realized a couple of days ago that I hadn't had a teacher of color for the first ten years of my educational experience. Feel like we have to have more people of color and positions of authority at school. It's a lot more comfortable to share your experiences with a person of color who really understands it.
I hope this moves the district to have more conversations. I don't think we necessarily have to think about what is the goal and what change do we want to see? I think change starts with having conversations and continuing to bring things to the surface and continuing to dialogue about what you could do differently.
So many amazing things came out of those listening sessions. We probably had eighty or so jam boards full of lived experience, a variety of voice and perspective. And a team was then assembled to synthesize the data that came from those sessions and those jam boards. And it was very clear that there were themes emerging. One of those themes was that we as a system need to do a better job of integrating social justice and an anti-bias lens into our teaching, as well as into our policies and procedures. The major themes and action steps were then compiled into an eight-point commitment document, highlighting areas where we have made progress as a district, as well as areas where we need to do better. The draft document was then shared with a large group of stakeholders, including teachers, site and district administrators, community partners. And this group then co-created the eight-point commitment to educational justice plan that you see before you. As you can see, the eight points clearly include a call to enhance climate and culture, expand and elevate family and student voice, call out the need for anti-racist, anti-bias instruction within our curriculum and overall dedicate ourselves to making our school district more equitable and just for all of its stakeholders. As you review these eight points, please note that some of these areas we've been working on for years. But until the data reflects more significant gains, there is still a great deal of work to be done. Now, at this time, I would like to introduce Greta Schulz, Principal of Star King K8, who is here to share her site's equity journey.
Good evening. Star King has been on an equity journey over the last six years and have now begun to align our work with the eight commitments. We began our journey with building a strong learning support team where we analyze and strategize around students' barriers to learning. We are also part of the Community Schools Grant, where our work focuses on fostering respectful, equitable, collaborative and reflective school culture to ensure academic success and social emotional wellbeing for each of our students. As an LST team and a community schools team, we looked at several data points to get a better understanding of who our students are, how they are achieving, how they are engaging and how they are feeling. As an entire team, we committed to focusing on our school culture and climate. All staff were trained in restorative practices and trauma-informed practices. And all teachers, grades K through eight, implemented community circles, mindfulness practices, restorative practices and social skills curriculum in their classrooms. We provided students opportunities to engage in our Black Student Union, Gay-Straight Alliance, peer mentoring, Safe Schools ambassadors, project optimism and a diversity of extracurricular opportunities, including sports, club, theater, arts, music and more. As part of our Community Schools Grant work, we facilitated listening sessions at our site for students, families and staff and looked for common themes. While we opened up the parent listening sessions to all families, we personally invited many families in order to get a broad representation of all voices on our campus. The listening sessions were an opportunity for students and parents to have voice and share actions they wanted to see to address any concerns or inequities. It is from these listening sessions where we created action items to lead and strengthen our equity work. To address our achievement gaps, the Star King team engaged in data-driven dialogue and focused on providing small group instruction and targeted intervention to meet the needs of all students. In order to empower our families with the tools needed to support learning at home, our team was trained in the WestEd Model Academic Parent Teacher Team and we implemented APTT meetings three times per year, where we looked at student data with families and provided the tools and resources needed to support the learning at home. Over the last several years, our team has engaged in various book studies and trainings to strengthen our ability to serve our diversity of students and families, including two learning trips to the Museum of Tolerance. As a team, we engaged in professional learning around PLCs and have begun to shift our work to a PLC model. We have committed to being a, by any means necessary, school, looking at individual students to determine where they are and what is needed in order for them to be successful academically and socially. We have looked at our achievement gaps and strategized around how to best support all students. For the past six years, we have been committed to hiring practices to bring diversity to our team and to provide new staff onboarding and continued support. As with our students and families, we work to create a collaborative and warm culture and climate with our team and we feel we are a school family. Star King is working to connect our equity work with distance learning. Teachers are committed to building relationships in their classrooms, beginning each day with a Zoom commu- beginning each day with a Zoom community circle and closing with a community circle. We will soon be starting our BSU and GSA back up on Zoom and creating opportunities for students to express themselves through the visual and performing arts. We will continue to engage in professional learning to increase our cultural competencies and implement social justice standards across all grade levels and all content areas. Continue to engage our families through a modified Academic Parent-Teacher Team model and weekly parent Zooms. Continue opportunities to listen to students and families, and continue to support new teachers at Star King. With me is Amber Trethaway, Reading Intervention Teacher and Learning Support Team and Community Schools Grant Coordinator, to briefly discuss our plan to provide universal access time across all grade levels in order to support the diverse needs of our students.
Thank you, Greta. In order to meet each student where they are and close the achievement gap, we have scheduled a universal access block for Kinder through 6th grade specifically for reading. Right now, we have many support staff working interdependently with classroom teachers during these blocks to assess using Dibbles as a screener. Then we have created diagnostic assessments on a digital platform, so we can assess remotely to drill down to the skill level for students who have not mastered foundational skills. We will also be using iReady as an asynchronous data source. When we finish assessing, we will collaborate around data and grade-level cohorts. Each specialist, support staff, and classroom teacher will instruct a group four to five days a week to ensure we fill gaps or provide enrichment for all students. We will use progress monitoring and use flexible grouping to accelerate learning. At Star King, we are dedicated to continuing our equity work during distance learning to ensure all students, including English language learners and marginalized groups, receive on-grade-level instruction, as well as targeted supports with intervention and extension. While we know distance learning is challenging for our students and families, we feel this model will provide all students the opportunity to be successful. Diana Marshall is now going to share with you the district-level actions of the eight-point commitments.
Thank you, Amber. Good evening. So as a district, our goal will be to be focused on taking actions in all eight areas with varying levels of implementation. It is important to note that the actions will not be implemented sequentially by commitment number and will be based on the opportunity presented to move forward in a changing, complex system. As many of you know, equity is a journey, and we need to meet the system where it is and then move forward. It requires us to have a plan, but be able to be responsive as opportunities and/or situations occur. So with that being said, the actions that will be shared tonight are divided into three seasons, a summer, fall, and spring. We committed to the participants in June to maintain transparent communication. And with that, in the area of Commitment Three, we have shared the eight-point commitment to the entire employee organization. We have updated the webpage to include our eight-point commitment along with the equity pledge. We have sent personal emails out to those who participated in June, and social media posts are scheduled for next week. As you know, the district has been engaged in equity work for years. This work has set the foundation in moving the eight-point commitment quickly into action with some movement as early as this summer. For example, in the area of Commitment Four, thanks to the relationships with SJTA, we are providing nine hours of professional learning to all SJTA members with a focus on equity. With Commitment Five, we embedded the social justice standards into the development of the essential standard lessons this summer. We offered a mini-training with the teachers and asked them to integrate the social justice standards into the lessons that they wrote. And then Commitment Seven, we are continuing to expand our onboarding process for all of our new employees through a virtual platform to continue to improve our levels of retention. So some actions that are planned are ready to implement in the fall. During the August 11th professional learning, it was recommended to staff to focus this year on Commitment One, Two, and Five. Depending on the expertise of the staff, the needs of the students, this is allowing for differentiation in choice. Then the staff spent time integrating their new learning into lessons that support relationship building with their students while on Zoom. Wrapped up into one complex action, the professional development plan for this year through the Department of Equity is aligned to Commitment Four with our options being differentiated and staff having choice in these selections. The plan is designed, again, to focus on Commitments One, Two, and Five. These include several dates of compassionate dialogue, a virtual platform of the Museum of Tolerance, the integration of the social justice standards, cultural relevancy, diversity, equity, and inclusion series. We'll be looking at institutionalized bias and US racism. We will offer a variety of book studies facilitated by the equity liaisons and online series with 18 options of one-hour trainings. So as we move into spring and looking at next steps, it was apparent that some of the actions in the eight-point commitment will need some planning and collaboration before we get to implementation. We will be inviting stakeholders to form working groups to be a part of the design in each of the following areas. In Commitment One, the equity liaisons, administrators, community partners, and staff will be first defining the identity safe zones on campus and then co-creating protocols to help support that goal. There was a clear message that came out of the student listening sessions that students want to talk about race, racism, and anti-racist practices. The idea of student-led social justice forums has begun to emerge and will be co-created with a team of community partners, teachers who have been part of the social justice collaborative and our BSU advisors. And this will be an action in Commitment Three. In the area of Commitment Six, equity liaisons in partnership with Epic Education and site teams will develop equity walks and develop supports for sites to assess the data and to help them determine the needs and next steps as the site moves along their own equity journey. Human Resources, along with hiring managers, will be working together to determine next steps in building the capacity in the area of retention for Commitment Seven around workforce diversity. In addition, we will continue to explore ways to consistently monitor our progress in this area. The network improvement community looking at access and opportunity in Commitment Eight, as well as the development of the success indicators in Commitment Two will include all stakeholders, and we will begin co-creating actions as early as September. We have begun to send out invitations to be a part of all of these sessions, and we have scheduled our Fall Stakeholder Equity Forum on October 29th, where plans will be shared and we will be asking for feedback. We continue to develop next steps and find ways to go deeper based on the needs of the community and the feedback that we receive. At this time, this concludes our update, and we are now available for any questions President Viascos.
Thank you very much, Dr. Calvin, Ms. Marshall, and the whole team. At this point, I will check in with Mr. Allen to see if we have any public comment on this item, and we'll also make a call for our participants who might wish to participate via Zoom to raise their hand at this time.
President Viascos, we have not had any written comments submitted for this item at this time. However, if you have joined us on the Zoom call, we would remind you, and you would like to comment on this item, now would be the time. You can do that by raising your hand, by clicking that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you've dialed into the meeting tonight, star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. We do have one raised hand at this time. Username identified by the initials J.S., I cannot see your full name, so I apologize. But J.S., you currently have your hand raised. Please begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Hi, I just have a quick question. From what you're saying about all the equity, it sounds like you have adopted the Teaching Tolerance curriculums that they have. And so I am wondering, you know, how balanced that is? And if that's going to be shared out with all the parents? That's it.
Thank you very much for your public comment on this item. Seeing no other hands raised at this time, I will turn it over to my colleagues. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? We will begin with Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Ms. Viascos. I don't have a question. I just have a statement. And as we know, many districts in the state and the country are just now beginning to work on equity issues. And I'm very proud to say that San Juan, we actually started our equity department five years ago. Am I right on that? Five years ago? Is that right, Kent? I predict you're five years ago.
Yes.
And as a result, I would, you know, as a result, we are where we are today with these eight commitment points that will help us as a district to continue to get better and to be able to address this very important issue. And I'm very proud of that, to say that we are actually, I feel we're ahead of the game. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I too am very proud of the work that's been done in the last five years. Actually, over many years, but in the last five years, I think we have really begun a system-wide change. And I think that's what will eventually pay off for our district. But the work from June until now has been extraordinary, and the involvement has been extraordinary. And I really want to thank everybody who's participated, both our district team, our site teams, and our students and parents who have contributed so much. I did have, I participated in the From Listening to Action Plan every one of the meetings. And at each of the meetings, there was great interest in every member of the district team participating in equity training. And I wanted to know, I know that on August 11th, we had Social Justice Professional Development Training. I wanted to know if our classified staff, our Teamsters, our district office staff were able to participate in that training, as well as the school site staffs. And in the school site staffs, again, were classified staff members allowed to participate?
I can start with that, and then Kent, maybe you can help follow up where I leave gaps. So I know that several sites actually offered additional pay for their classified staff to attend as well. That was not yet a workday for many of our classified staff. In addition, we have had additional, we had an ed services professional development training and that this last week, because HH, the homeschool teachers needed to focus on getting homeschool ready, so we gave them a little space to do that. And then we invited all of our ed services, district central-level classified employees to that training. And then we are scheduling a meeting with ECE to also do another training around that. My understanding, and I, please correct me, is that we are looking, we are working through negotiations to complete the CSCA and the Teamsters conversation.
Did you want to add to that, Mr. Kern?
No, I think she covered it. Yeah, we're still working with those other groups.
Yeah.
I'd like to put my pitch in that I think that the way this work will continue to flourish is if every employee from every group has the opportunity for the training and for professional development. So any way that we can do that, and I would say the board needs to participate, our district office staff, I know they have been participating with administrators in training for the last three years. But I think as much as we can, as a whole system, participate in the training, the stronger we'll be, and the stronger our program will be. And I want to thank you, Mrs. Marshall, for responding. I had probably two pages of questions, and you responded to them. And I look forward to working with you in the future. I think this is work that is really important for our district, for our students, for our families. And I salute all that you're doing and offer any support that I can. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thank you. I just want to say I love everything that the district is doing. And I echo the sentiments that, you know, we've been starting this work and doing this work for a really long time, and I just feel that it gets more and more and more robust. I got to acknowledge, you know, we have a lot of work to do. And I'm just so happy that we have everyone on deck to do that work. I mean, some terrible things do happen on our campuses. And I hope that the youth and the families that have gone through really hard stuff when it comes to racism, know how much is going into making things better. And so, a couple of things. I'm also really happy that we're bridging in community partners into this work and that we're, you know, standing with community, acknowledging maybe we don't know everything, and bringing in partners so that we could do the absolute best job that we can. To me, that makes this work way more genuine than sitting alone in a silo trying to do this work. So I'm really excited about that. I'm really happy that this plan really sets forth a way to continue the conversation. It's not a one-and-done. It's a journey, and we acknowledge that and we keep going. It's not just a one-time thing, so I'm really excited about that. And it's not going to be quick, you know? It's going to be big time. And I'm excited that we're investing in that way. I did want to say, as a parent, I mean, of course, I'm aware of a lot of this great work that we're doing as a board member. As a parent, I'm not sure that I'm so aware. And I'm wondering what can be done, and maybe this is part of the plan, so that more folks that are maybe more engaged at the school site level than the district level just be aware of the work that's happening and can be engaged in the work or invited to be, you know, to be a part of the process when it makes sense. And maybe that's more communication straight from the school site level. I don't know that I have all the answers of how to do that. But that is something I think about, that I think some people, families and students that need to know what's going on maybe don't know. So that's a thought that I had. And also, I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate saying, I'm seeing the hard language on the slides, in the, you know, in the presentations, the things that people don't feel comfortable saying, we're saying. And that's the only way that we can really address what needs to be addressed so that we can move into a place of anti-racism. So I'm just really happy about everything that we're doing, and I'm excited to see our work grow and our kids supported. Thank you.
So, Ms. Creason, just to, I agree with you around the parent communication. And I think with the way we were starting school, we were strategically thinking that we would lose the message at the beginning of school. And that's why we're going to start our social media this week and into next week. And we will continue to work on that parent communication piece. So I'm in agreement with you. That has not happened yet.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I just kind of kept talking and didn't give you a chance to get a word in. I apologize. So thank you for that. And I'm wondering on that note, will school sites be asked to also share on their channels, not just the district?
That hasn't come to my mind, so that's a great idea. Thank you for sharing that.
Well, thank you.
Dr. McKibben.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. I must say that I was at several of the sessions during the June period and onward, and I was so impressed. And I was so impressed with the willingness to tackle the kinds of tough conversations that need to be had. Some of you know that my work in education has spanned over 50 years. And I must say that over that 50 years, I have seen these issues before from my days of sitting on a stool in Annapolis, Maryland, when my friend Jim Dawson wasn't being served to the day. And frankly, what we've done to this point is, in some cases, the easier part of it. I want to address my remarks to three different areas. One of them, and note that indeed, what we are doing is what many places that have attempted this have not been doing, that we've included the questions of accountability and this sort of thing. That so what? How, and how are we going to demonstrate that we have made a difference in the lives of our students and our families? And so indeed, I want to ask, I'm going to ask a couple of questions and I'm going to continue to talk and then let you talk at the end. I'm interested in what the accountability teams, how they're going to be constituted, and what kinds of things they're going to be looked at. I'm very impressed with the notions of connecting with more community partners. Going back to the accountability thing, I'm interested, on page seven, you talked about the indicators for success. I'm interested in some examples of what you see as the indicators of success. And then finally, the notion of connections. One of the things when we do this kind of thing is sometimes we forget what we have already done and don't connect to those sort of things. For example, one of the most important parts of equity in our system is what we have done in terms of connecting our high school students to advanced placement courses at places like Encina and so forth, that have made some fairly significant advancements in that. But if we don't see the curriculum as part and parcel of our quest for educational justice, then we miss an enormously important opportunity. The whole idea of what we have gone through in the last couple of years in terms of putting faces, the faces of our students into our curriculum is a very much a part of what we're talking about when we're talking about issues of justice and equity. And continuing to do that and indeed to do the tough things of saying, are we really doing that? And how well are we doing it? Is very much a part of the kind of efforts that we need to make. Again, congratulations to all the work that we've been doing. But this is just the beginning. We've got a whole lot of work to do. And indeed, trying to make sure that we do have indicators of success, that we do, can put our finger on and say, this is the place that we made a difference. Not a year from now, but a year from now, five years from now, and again and again. Because this is, this is a marathon. We've got to stay with it.
I agree, Dr. McKibben. So a question around the, to answer first around the accountability. So there, there's two parts to the accountability. One, the first part that we really want to look at is how, how do we develop systems to help support each other in interrupting both implicit and explicit biases and/or racial injustices? And looking at San Diego State University as an example, they've actually created a platform where people can use, like what we know as tell someone to report a racial injustice that has occurred to them. And I think the details that we really need to work through is, is then how do we respond to that? So that team that's going to help support that will be from human resources, from legal, from the face department and the equity team. We will include community members and members of our employee bargaining units to help us determine how, how, because it's not about a gotcha. It's about how do we truly change behavior and culture that these racial injustices that occur, whether implicit or explicit, are not something that we tolerate here as a district? So that's going to be our first area of accountability that you asked about. And then the developer, the developing the indicators of success, I'm really hoping that this team creates one, a minimum of one, if not multiple indicators of success in each one of these commitment areas and that we continually use it as our equity dashboard to see if we're truly moving the needle. I, I think your example of looking at curriculum or how are we infusing equity and diversity into curriculum? Are we truly, are students picking up books where the heroes and the protagonists are people of color? Are they truly seeing themselves in a positive light? Are they exposed to other perspectives in their history classes that are not part of the dominant narrative? Right? All of these things will be, we'll need to really co-create how we start to look at those as successes. And then how do we measure that to see if we're moving the needle? Um, I, so I think I answered those two questions and in, around the connection question. I wasn't sure what, where the question was in that. Do, did you have a more specific question around making the connections?
You know, that you had talked a little bit about community partners and connecting to things like the Museum of Tolerance and so forth. How, how much do you expect that that kind, those kinds of connections become a part and parcel of what we do? Or, you know, one of the things, and I plead absolute guilt on this, is that, that altogether, too often, this has become the flavor of the month. And one of the things that I'm, I want to make sure that we have is that this is, this becomes part of our culture.
Yeah.
Is having those partners and how, how connected we stay with them. And again, you know, looking back on, on the whole, you know, what we did related to, and I've lost the term, the groups we were working with a few years ago that were working on these access kinds of questions and making sure that those don't get lost as we move to this next thing was what I was talking about in terms of connections.
I'm going to speak for Lori Vine as well as myself. I think the work, I'm going to use our work that we developed here in June around the listening sessions. I think there was a real shift in, in that we didn't, we didn't walk into a Zoom meeting or into a meeting saying, hey, this is what we're going to do. And that, that singularly, as a department, had had all the plans worked out. We, Lori and I really walked into those planning sessions with the idea of like, here's our goal and let's co-create that. And so I think that shifts, that has a real shift in the collaboration when we work with our community partners, with our equity liaisons, our staff, and in other leaders across our district. It really, we're all invested in it because we've all had a part in creating, creating that. And I think that's where, I think one of my biggest ahas in this work through June was that, that, that moving from collaboration to really moving to co-creation and in how that truly builds that sustainability that I think you're looking for, Dr. McKibben.
Thank you.
Yeah, indeed, sustainability is, is the right word. And indeed, and that's why I think it's so important in terms of, you know, making sure that things like our advanced placement courses, like our curriculum and that sort of thing, this doesn't become a one-off or a specialized kind of thing. It becomes part of what we are.
Exactly.
Thank you very much, Dr. McKibben. And thank you, thank you to the whole team, both for the presentation but for this ongoing work. I think probably in early spring or even into the summer, it would have been really easy for us to just say, look, we've got too much going on. COVID is taking up everything. We have a ton of priorities. Let's put this work on pause. But we didn't. Because I, a lot of this work is in recognition that we don't have time to wait. There's just not, there's, there's no room for pausing this work. There's no room for using the otherwise very valuable time of now to have these discussions and build these, and build this, build this expectation and this strength and skill set within our community, both within our practitioners but within our students and within our entire community. So I just am extraordinarily thankful to the team and also for my colleagues for making this an ongoing point of commitment and, and work. I think, as has been acknowledged by the continuation, it's just, it's just work that can't wait. So I, my questions have, my colleagues have been inclusive of all of my questions already. I don't have any other questions and just want to echo or just say thank you again to the team. And invite, Mr. Kern, did you have any other final words? He did not. Any final remarks from my colleague before we move on?
No, Paul, I would just, I would like to thank the board because I think it's very clear that this board has made this a priority. You know, from the time that all of you have been on the board, Ms. Costa, you go back to this work for many, many years before you were even in these roles. And so I think it, I want to reiterate, reiterate again, we are committed to having those hard conversations and continuing this work to move forward. So thanks to all your comments as board members.
Thank you very much.
With that, we are now at item I three, Education Technology Joint Powers Authority. Mr. Skabinski, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, President Viasquez, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. I bring before you tonight Superintendent's recommendation to discuss and adopt Resolution 3002 authorizing the San Juan Unified District to join the EdTech J P A as one of its seven founding members as outlined in the J P A's bylaws included in your board packet. With that said, if you have any questions, I'd be more than welcome to answer those for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skabinski. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comment items on, on this item? Do we have any public individuals wishing to give public comment on this item?
We have not received any written comment on this item. If you are with us on the Zoom meeting tonight and would like to offer a comment on this item, now would be the time to do so. You may do that by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've dialed into the meeting tonight, you may press star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. At this time, I do not see any individuals using the raise your hand function on Zoom. We'll give it one more pause. Okay. With that, do any of my colleagues have comments or questions on this item? We'll start with you, Mr. Hernandez.
No questions. Move the item when my colleagues are ready.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Costa.
I just want to say congratulations to the staff on this item. This is really exciting. What an honor for our district. And it sounds like it will have long-term implications for us, both financially and in terms of work that we'll be able to do with other districts that are similar in size to ours. And I can't wait to find out who the other district is that is the mystery district that isn't listed. So thanks so much for the work. And I will second Mr. Hernandez when we get to that point.
Okay, very enthusiastic on this item. Ms. Creason.
I just want to say I love a good J P A. And this is a great way to, to manage costs, especially when we know what we're about to go into with the statewide, nationwide recession. So I was really excited. I went through the contract and I like, you know, how things are written about getting out if it's not working. I'm really excited about it and I think it's a great move. So fully support it.
Thank you, Ms. Creason, Dr. McKibben.
Yeah, yes, I, I too would like to know a little bit more about the, the sixth member. And I understand that both Ms. Costa and I were driven slightly crazy thinking that we couldn't count when, when all the time, there were six people there and they were talking about seven. Also, I'd like to know what is the expected timeline of when this, this might be finalized and we might be moving forward?
As far as the, the number of founding members, that is outlined in the J P A bylaws, that they will have a minimum of two and up to seven. And so an invite was put out to the district to take part in that. And so we thought it was a great opportunity to do so. In regards to an additional district, all we can say at this time is there's been an invite offered to another district. And so we would be speaking out of turn if we were to acknowledge who that might be. In regards to the timeline for our participation, there is a J P A board meeting this Thursday in which it is scheduled to take action if the board so far approves our ability to participate.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Seeing no further questions. Thanks to the team for bringing this forward. I also enjoy a good J P A. We're very nerdy group of governing board members, which is a good thing. I have one question. And that's just, can you speak a little bit to kind of the current status of Irvine U S D? And perhaps, to the extent possible, some, their kind of, just their, their state right now and kind of fiscal capacity? I assume that's all been vetted. But I just want to flag that they are the fiscal agent of the G P A. So just wanted to know if you could speak a little bit to that and make sure that I have full confidence in all of our partners, but wanted to make sure that was taken a look at.
President Viasquez, this is Kent Stevens. I'm the one who wrote the cover on this and brought this to the board. I'm the one who received the invitation from the recruiter. They, just to give you a little bit more background, the recruiter said that the founding members, the current founding members of which there are five, were looking specifically for districts in Northern California. As you can tell, the original founders are in Orange County. And they are looking for districts that have exceptional leadership in both business and technology. I can speak highly of the leadership at Irvine Unified School District. I think that their business financial staff is probably one of the most highly regarded in the state. Their district is slightly smaller than our district. They are growing, and I would say growing fairly rapidly. And I think Peter could probably speak just as highly of their technology staff. In terms of the, the, I guess, confusion around who is the number six district and seventh district? I'm not sure it matters too much. There were five. And we know that there were two additional districts of which we were one that were invited about a month ago. I think that we were actually the sixth district called. But since we had to, we thought this item might have been delayed a little bit. We thought we might actually be the seventh member to join. But I believe we will be the sixth. And again, that meeting will be held on Thursday. I will be representing the district on the governing board. Mr. Skabinski will be my alternate. But again, I have full confidence in the business and financial staff at Unified, Irvine Unified. But again, I have full confidence in the business and financial staff at Unified, Irvine Unified from Orange County. And again, they're one of the original founding members back in 2018.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I appreciate that context. Very valuable. And thank you, Mr. Stevens, for all of your work in making this possible as well. Are there any further questions at this time from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, this has already been moved by Mr. Hernandez and seconded by Ms. Costa. I think I got that right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. With that, we are at item I four, intent to convey an easement at San Juan High School. Mr. Kamara, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, President Vasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight's facilities item is an action item. Citrus Heights Water District is seeking a construction and permanent easement to construct a decorative concrete masonry wall between San Juan High School and the Citrus Heights Water Department Facility Yard. In your packet in exhibit B, there is a Google map with the delineation of where that wall be constructed. The superintendent is recommending that the board adopt resolution 3006 declaring the intent to convey a permanent easement at San Juan High School to Citrus Heights Water District and to call a public hearing to be held on September 8th at the next board meeting 2020. I'm available for any questions that the board may have about the easement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kamara, for the presentation. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We've not received any written comment on this item. And again, if you are with us on the Zoom call and would like to offer a comment on this specific item, the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you've dialed in star nine on your telephone keypad.
I see no public comment at this time. I will turn it to my colleagues. Do any board members have any questions or comments on this item? Dr. McKibben.
Mr. Kamara, in terms of this wall, and now I'm still a bit confused. The wall is not there right now. It's being constructed. What is the purpose of, of the wall? You mentioned that it was decorative, but is there any, is there any other purpose for this wall than being decorative and big?
Well, according to the Citrus Heights Water Department, they have constructed a similar type wall on their property. They're getting that. This is a, also a security feature, but it's also a decorative feature for their proposed location. It is mostly for the construction of the security of their, of their yard and their property as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3006 declaring the intent to convey a permanent easement at San Juan High School to the Citrus Heights Water District and to call a public hearing on September 8th? So I have a, it's been moved by Ms. Creason and seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Kamara, and thank you to your team as well. We are now at item I five, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Mr. O'Apolo, please begin when you are ready.
Good evening, President Vasquez, board members, Superintendent Kern, Mrs. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation that the governing board approve the adoption of Declaration for Need for Fully Qualified Educators for 2021 school year. Human Resources has followed the policies and procedures for hiring fully credentialed teachers and staff schools for 2021. While this search has been conducted, HR may need to assign certain teachers on the basis of an emergency authorization. This is an action item and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Apolo. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We have not received any written comments on this item. And again, if you're with us on the meeting tonight on Zoom and would like to offer a comment, the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine on your telephone keypad if you have dialed in.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I am monitoring our attendee list to see if anybody has raised their hand. And at this moment, there have been none. In the meantime, I will turn it to my colleagues for any comments or questions on this item. I see a universal head shaking and the negative. So with that, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2020, 2021 school year?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. McKibben and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item I six, Exemption to the Separation from Service Requirement. Mr. O'Apolo, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, President Vasquez. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation that the governing board adopt resolution 3005 for exemption for separation from service requirements pursuant to California Education Code 24214.5 or 26812. And I'm here to answer any questions you have on this item and it is an action item.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Apolo. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We have not had any written public comments submitted. And again, if you're with us on the call, the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine on your telephone keypad.
I'm just going to do a quick glance at our attendee list and look for any raised hand. Seeing none, I will turn it to my colleagues. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 3005, exemption to the separation from service requirement?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item I seven, Presentation of the District's Proposal with CSEA for Successor Contract for this 2020, 2021 school year. Mr. Schumake, please begin when you are ready.
Good evening, President Vasquez, board members, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the district's bargaining interests with the California School Employees Association, Chapter 127, for 2020, 2021 reopeners. At this time, I can answer any questions if needed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
Again, we have not received any written public comment. And if you're with us on the Zoom call tonight and would like to offer a public comment, the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine on your telephone keypad.
Seeing no public comment at this time. Do any board members have questions or comments? Public comment and action is scheduled for September 8th on this item. We are now at item I eight, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. So colleagues, you might remember at the June 23rd meeting, we voted unanimously to submit a nominee from our community to represent the school and community college districts on the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. That was Ms. Mary Beth Barber, Barber, who accepted the nomination. So that was first our nomination to have her on the ballot. Now every school district in the region has to vote affirmatively in favor of her to be the representative. And she's both who we nominated, but also the only person on the ballot. So we will be adopting, taking this up because our September meetings are quite busy. So at this time, Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
No written comments have been submitted. And if you are with us on the Zoom, that raise hand button at the bottom of the screen or star nine on your telephone keypad if you would like to offer a comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. I see no public comment on our Zoom platform at this time. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Okay, this is an action item. Is there a motion to cast a vote for Mary Beth Barber for the school and community, community district representative for the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. McKibben. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Creason is who I heard. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item J, Board Reports. Are there any board reports at this time? Mr. Hernandez? I see him passing. Ms. Costa, she will also take a pass. Ms. Creason.
I'll just quickly say I appreciate all the families that have been reaching out just to talk about how things are going. Everyone's having a different individual experience based on grades and schools. And, you know, for the most part, things are going well, but where, you know, there's need for improvement. Folks are willing to be involved and be a part of that improvement. So just want to say thanks so much to stakeholders that are taking the time to talk to me about what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
Just wanted to report that we had a voluntary meeting of the LCAP committee and we had, actually had a nice representation. I believe around 20 or so of the people were there and, and were asking very good questions and so forth. Our next, our first regular meeting will be this Thursday. And thank you, thanks to the board. We'll have 19 of our 20 members hopefully there and so forth. And you will be getting another recommendation at our next board meeting to fill out our full slate of LCAP members. And that, and the other thing I want to mention was that I attended the Orangeville Community Council member and they were very interested in the start of school and how it was going and so forth. And I think it's really indicative of how interested and how interested in helping our, our community partners are in terms of as we go through what we're going through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben, for the report. I don't have a board report for this meeting, so we are now at item K, Future Agenda Items. Do any of my colleagues wish to add an item to future agendas? Okay, seeing none, we are at item L, Visitor Comments. Mr. Allen, are there any visitor comments at this time?
We have not had any written comments submitted and this is our final opportunity for public comment tonight. This does not have to be on an agenda item. It can be on any topic. If you have a public comment you would like to offer at this time and you're with us on the Zoom meeting, please click the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen or star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. And I'll ask my colleagues to patiently give us a few moments so that individuals can indicate if they would like to speak at this time. Do we have any attendees that would like to offer public comment at this time? We do have two individuals. We have, they raised their hands simultaneously. We've got user JS followed by Carol York. I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Ralph and Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer the items to appropriate staff members who can then follow up with you. First, we have username JS, followed by Carol York. JS, please begin when you are ready. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name the first time you offered public comment. So I can only refer to you as user JS. Please begin with your two minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. That's fine. I know that it has been mentioned in past board meetings and I want to bring it up again. It is difficult. I mean, you had 124 pages of board agenda items. It was very time consuming to flip through them. And then you come to the meetings and I think your assumption is as board members and as presenters that the general public understands all your acronyms, understands the full idea of what you're speaking of. No money is ever mentioned when things are put out on the agenda and discussed. I would like more transparency. I have no idea what you were talking about for many of the items tonight. And I just don't think it's right. I don't think it's transparent. So I would like to see a serious increase in revealing how much money is being spent and in just sharing out what those acronyms are and what the topic is instead of reading, you know, the numbers for whatever it was. That's what I'm requesting again. So I would appreciate more transparency in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your public comment and for joining us. Next up, we have Carol York. Carol, please begin when you're ready.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I just have something for you to think about. With the parents that are doing technology distance learning with their children, it makes it difficult for them when they have more than one child to go to help them with their distance learning and to pick up their lunches or breakfast at the schools at the same time. I was wondering if you could work on that because some of them are working families. Some of them have, are working at home, but some of them are working at home and in the office. And we need to make sure our children are fed. Sorry, I get emotional, but we need to make sure that we fit their lunches, their meals in somehow where the parents are able to pick them up. Or maybe somebody could volunteer to deliver them. I don't know. But maybe you could think about that and that would be very happy, make me very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. York, for joining us and for your public comment. Okay. At this time, I see no other participants who've joined us this evening wishing to participate at visitor comment. So with that, we do not need to return to closed session and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you for joining us tonight. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, September 8th. Public session is anticipated to start at approximately 6:30 PM. We do anticipate being on the Zoom platform as well as streaming to YouTube as well. Links will be posted approximately 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting at www.sanjuan.edu/September8. Thank you again for joining us tonight.